Here.
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 Go ahead.
I'd like to welcome, we have two board of supervisors in our audience tonight, Vanessa Johnson and Tommy Washington, welcome to our meeting. Now, as public comment, could somebody hand us the list? Mr. Taylor, would you like to read the rules for public comment?
Rules for public comment, identify yourself by name and nine-one-one address. Two, speakers are limited to three minutes. Individuals may not reserve or otherwise transfer their time to another speaker. Four, specific personnel matters must not be initiated at a public meeting. Five, speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or use profanity. Six, specify the nature of your remarks. Seven, speakers who have previously spoken on a subject for public comment should not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Eight, specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. Nine, anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to present the presentation twenty-four hours and the events will review by the staff for appropriateness. Ten, all questions shall be directed to the chairman, who will, at his or her discretion, solicit a response from the appropriate staff member.
Okay, first up, we have Tommy, Amy Kay Holmes.
There you is. There you see. Apologize for my handwriting, I didn't have my glasses on. I'd like to welcome the new board members and thank the other board members for their services. Tonight, I'm here talking about school again. Akamak has a new webpage and it's akamak.org, like the K on. And the school is a large part, and this Akamak primary is a large part of it, it's the history of it, and we would like to keep it as it is, the way it looks. I would like to see an independent person be placed on committee for how the project is to be continued. We need transparencies. We've been going through this for a great big while and we just haven't heard too much going on, it's just been a little hearsay there, back and forth. As a Tine member and being on the Tine Council, we would like to make the Tine look historic the way it is. The building, to me, can be used in a whole, you know, a lot of different ways. You've got the school board, you've got the board of supervisors, and you also have auditorium and everything in there that could be used as community service. It's a lot of things, though, in that school in Medina. We do not want a parking lot in front of it, that's it. I've had so many comments, I had two or three this past week. And I just hope everything is, you know, goes through wonderful for the community.
Thank you. Connie Burford.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Welcome to the new board members and to the returning board members, congratulations. My name is Connie Burford, eight-one-two-eight, Bebe Road, Geneva, Virginia. I know the budget isn't on the agenda tonight, however, budget meetings are taking place. For that reason, I thought I would bring a few things to your attention. First off, I have a report from 2019 which includes twenty-seven areas of noncompliance in special education, according to the VDOE. I've shared this with both Dr. Hall and Mrs. Anis. Many of the twenty-seven items we are still noncompliant with. This is due mainly to staffing shortages and inexperienced staff. I bring this up in hopes that those who sit on the budget committee and the board as a whole will take this into consideration when they listen tonight to the C Act present their budget requests and when they receive staffing recommendations from principals in the buildings. And they will remember how important special education is in our county schools and for us to be compliant. Second, recently, I saw an administrative position advertised in the bus shop. This is a new position. For years, our bus shop has been run by one director and a secretary. I can't imagine what could have happened that would present a problem for us to now have to have a second administrative position. I feel that this money could be better spent as raises for bus drivers. That way, maybe we could alleviate the problem of having such bus driver shortages. Third, it would be nice to have the names of all committee members listed on the board site. I think that since it is public information, we should be having that. And it would be nice to have updates of all committees given at board meetings, just like Mr. Heinz just said. Thank you.
Mason Williams.
Good afternoon, I'd just like to plead my case.
Can you say your name and nine-one-one address first, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mason Williams, one-four-three-three-two Maswell Life Road Highway. And tonight, I'd just like to plead my case for Arcadia Football Team going eight-on-eight man football league. I've played the past three years, and I've played football a lot my life. And I feel that lately, or past four years, it's been hard since COVID, you know, or start of COVID. But recruiting has just been a hard thing. And a lot of people don't want to join especially for a team that hasn't been winning as much to other teams or has been struggling. When people see that, they don't want to. But we got the chance to play, and they don't need scrimmage. Last year, we did very well. And though we did good this football season, people, we don't have many people that want to come out for football. And especially hard because we're losing so many players this year when they graduate. I just want to plead my case in asking that we get the chance to build a eight-man football team for the next two years so we can rebuild our football program. And honestly, that would really help to most likely win more games, and it would help recruit more players rebuilding in the future. That side I'd like to say, thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Price.
My name is Stephen Price, two-six-zero-zero-zero, Marshall Street, Lockwood Avenue. Arcadia High School has already been approved by the league that runs the eight-man football team to join them. We would like the same opportunity that she was given and be allowed to go eight-on-eight for two years. Not only will this help the Arcadia football program, it also helps us thrive and student athlete. We know what it's like to play bigger schools, and we only have twelve eighteen players. We walk into the game with feeling defeat. We tried to recruit more players to come out, but they said they would only come out if we had the eight-on-eight football. And I'm going to play this one back this season, and when we find out we're going into a league, I can't say how excited I was. It's like, I feel this is the first time we compete, and we only have tonight. We have tried for months, but it's often done this, please help us, and we will prove to everyone that this was the right decision. We are so tired of fighting football. Please give us your vote to switch to eight-on-eight football. God bless you all.
Timothy Height.
Good evening, my name is Tim Height, Timothy Height, thirty-five eighteen Sheepoff Road, Oakmont Parish. Let me start off by saying I am new to the district, and regardless of tonight's decision, I'm proud to be at Barburg and excited for this coming season. I just got hired as a special ed teacher, and I will be coaching, regardless of the decision, I'll be coaching Arcadia High School football this year. I came to Akamak to impact, guide, and motivate a population of students similar to how I grew up. I'm not only here to educate and help our students academically, but to help build a culture here in Akamak. Through our football program, that set our athletes and students up for success, as well as being a safe, nurturing environment where we can help our student athletes be the best versions of themselves and learn not only to lose, but also how to win. Being new to the district and somewhat of an outsider, I rest assured I have not been influenced or corrupted in my opinions. This is my opinion of what would be best for our student athletes. Today, I respectfully ask for their full support on transitioning this season to eight-man football. Again, I'm very proud to be in Akamak, it's a great county to be in. I've been on the losing end, just last year, oh-and-ten, and I've been on the winning end, winning championships. And you equally learn as much about yourself as you do about life, winning and losing. Our students have lost, and, you know, I do think they deserve to win and to help build this program and possibly transition back to eleven-man once our program is resurged. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Newman.
Good evening, I'd like to first thank the school board for your service to our county and for all you do with the education of our children. Appreciate you. I'm going to speak on the school board and the Akamak school restoration again. I'm on the town council in Akamak, I live on Jailhouse Road, which is now called Courthouse Road. Just about two years ago, I saw an architectural graphic which was proposed that would put a rather large parking lot with tall parking lights directly in front of the main entrance, Cortico. This would most likely necessitate the removal of the sycamore trees, which are probably all about eighty years old now, which frame the Cortico and the beautiful brickwork of this nineteen-thirty-two building. Like many residents of our town and others who have shared their opinions with me and Tommy Heinz and other members of our town council, we strongly urge that the school board and the architects who will be restoring this historic neo-bauhaus-designed building will leave the present facade and landscaping as it is today and it was in nineteen-thirty-two. The staff and visitors parking lot should remain where it has been for over ninety years. The second thing I wanted to talk about was the meeting format of this school board hearing. I'm grateful that I'm permitted to speak for a few minutes, but I've been continually frustrated and annoyed that I am in the public. We're not allowed to ask questions or to receive an answer, impossible, or even a response. I would like to be able to ask the board or individual school board members where they stand their opinions about various educational issues or controversial social issues that affect our culture and they be introduced in classroom. I just urge you to think about this and see if you can't open up this meeting a bit more so that we can communicate back and forth. In short, I'm asking, like Tommy said, I'm asking for more transparency and thus better communication and understanding between the school board, educators, parents, and top spaters. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Next up is the approval of the minutes from the January second meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The vouchers. Does anyone have any questions about the vouchers? Is there a motion to approve the vouchers?
I move to approve the vouchers as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, I would give a presentation from Rural Health.
It's a group of us.
Okay, great. Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you for letting us come and speak to you all tonight. My name is Jeanette Davis, I'm the CEO of Easton Shore Rural Health, and my physical address is two-five-five-nine-three East Main Street. But I work at the corporate office and all eleven other centers that we have throughout. First off, Dr. Hall, thank you for always being enthusiastic when we come to you about this program. And I congratulate the new board members and the seasoned board members, way to go for hanging in there. And thank you for what you do for the schools for Akamak County. We're coming tonight, we're going to talk about the dental program that has been with you all since nineteen-ninety-three. It started out with the mobile unit that we went around, and eventually, we went to what we called the little Volkswagen building, that it was a single trailer. Over the years, we got to advance to the Cadillac, which was the double Y, and it has served a wonderful purpose. We have been in Panketteck, and we are at Batompkin, and about two years ago, we put a site at Nantua Middle School, thank you. What we were seeing was the people at the elementary schools, great, they were getting their care, but then when they went to the high school or the middle school, we weren't getting them back as much as we needed to. That has proven to be very beneficial, and we want to move on with that. But for right now, we don't have, all our schools do not have a site. So we have what we call a program called the TOPS, it's the traveling oral program. And we set up like a mass unit, and we go to the schools, and the schools have been very good about giving us a room, maybe at the edge of a classroom, not in use, or somewhere that we can set up. When we have findings, we will actually send them back to the school units or even at our Atlantic Community Health Center. I'm going to give you some stats for two thousand twenty-three, and when I was reading over them today, I have to tell you, I was very much overwhelmed with the progress that we've made over the years. I would love to be up here for about two hours, but I know I'm limited, so I promise you I'm going to keep this short. But we saw last year three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven children. With that, we gave nine thousand forty-four dental visits in the schools alone. And you're thinking, well, why did we have more visits? With the care plans, sometimes it took two to three visits per child to get it completed, which that is great news because that meant coming back that we could treat them for the needs that they did have. We were eight hundred and four days in the school units last year in two thousand twenty-three. We're there even when the schools are closed. And we do that because there are a lot of parents that they may be home with their kids, but they will bring them out to see the dentist. Or if they have an already scheduled appointment and they're taking time off, they want to be able to come. I could go over and over some more teeth pull, the cleanings, but one thing in particular I wanted to highlight that these children are able to receive, and that's seventy-seven percent of our Akamak County schools that were in the dental unit, ages six to nine, received sealants. Once applied, these sealants protect against eighty percent of cavities for the first two years, and then it goes down to fifty percent for the next two years. I think about these students, and where would they go if they didn't have the school units to go to? So we are thankful that the access that you provide, and I wanted to, I've got four dentists behind me that are going to give you a couple of stories that I think will be compelling. But once again, thank you for the service that you do and allowing us to come. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Scott Wolpin, I'm the chief dental officer at Easton Shore Rural Health, and I've been here for ten years. And my role tonight is to introduce my colleagues, they're the providers who are caring for our children in Akamak County Public Schools. And they're going to share patient stories with you that I think really validate the importance and the value of this program. But before I introduce them to you, I wanted to be selfish and explain why I think school-based dental appointments make sense. Tooth decay is the most common childhood disease, it's four more times common than asthma for school-aged children. And we know how many of our children have asthma. And children that have poor oral health experience tooth pain, and that makes it very difficult for them to concentrate in school. Sometimes it means miss school days and subsequently all translates into poor school performance. And the other reason I really like our school-based dental appointments is because it's an opportunity for us to support the school nurses. There are children that go to school each day with tooth pain, infections, or even children that get hurt when they're at school and the playground. So it's pretty awesome to be able to help our school nurses. So without any further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Stephanie Shelley, who's our dentist at Panketteck Elementary School.
Hello. It's truly an honor and a privilege to serve the community and the kids. So I had a patient that came in, she was fourteen years old. We've been seeing her since she was about five, you know, we see her every six months for a checkup, and she needed any fillings. And then during COVID, that was a really, really hard time for dentistry and for our program where we weren't able to see patients until we were able to step by to make sure everyone's safe. And so this child did not get back in for almost two years, so she came back in. She, fortunately, I love it, they keep coming back and keep coming back. And so she came back in, and she said, my wisdom tooth bothered me, and, you know, she's young, so I'm thinking it's not a wisdom tooth. We took an X-ray, and she had a large lesion in her mandible, and if she had not treated, it could have been catastrophic. So we sent her to the oral surgeon at CHKD, and she's received treatment, and she's doing very well. And so I just love, I mean, we do basic everyday things for people every day, but when we find something that is, I mean, life-changing, it's very, very important in there.
And Dr. Tiffany Angel Doris, who works very much on the.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I am proud to work here, and the trailer in the back, and we love the kids, we are here every day, days a week. But I'm also really proud of the TOPS program where we go to Akamak Elementary and Kegateck. So the story that actually happened pretty recently, we're at Kegateck, one of the days we're here, we see kids for their cleanings and basic things at the schools. We have a small patient, eight years old, who had some dental leads, some really severe cavities, really big holes, and permanent teeth, baby teeth. So teeth were chip broken, and they were needs, we couldn't take care of when we were here. We knew that this child needed to get to a specialist. We had a couple of barriers. We had to get permission from the parents for everything. But in this case, this child's parents, the mother was incarcerated and the father passed away. So the child and siblings were with the grandparent. And of course, that's another bag of issues where the consent, sure, the grandparent has consent and can, you know, legally allow the child to take services. And as you know, the grandparent was very overwhelmed, just in general, an unplanned situation. So because we were in the schools, what we were able to do is monitor the kid. Even though we weren't able to get this child right away to the specialist, we were able to keep an eye on this child on a regular basis. Whereas if we were depending on the grandparent to bring them to the school, they might not be able to, just because of a bunch of other barriers. But because we're in the school, we can check on this child on a regular basis. We were able to use our outreach team to be in touch with social services, with the specialist office. And just recently, the beginning of this month, we were able to get this child seen across the bay so that they don't need to take it care of. That's one less thing that grandma has to worry about.
And Dr. Randy Wing, this is Arcadia St. Andrew Middle School.
Hello, thank you all for having us. I'm so excited to be the dentist at Andrew Middle School. We started that program about two years ago, and it's been really rewarding to be able to continue the wonderful care and work that Dr. Shelley they almost started in our elementary schools and to be able to bring that with them into junior high and high school, which are crucial years where they're getting all their permanent teeth that need to last them a lifetime. So the case that I want to talk about today is a fourteen-year-old patient that I saw, she was actually thirteen when I first saw her, starting in twenty-twenty-two. She was in that Andrew. She and her family had recently moved here from Guatemala, so she did not speak English at all. And when she first came to our office, I think prior to coming to our offices, she had never received any dental care in her entire life. So her first visit with us, she showed up with a pretty severe access on one of her front teeth, a lot of swelling and infection. And in addition to that one tooth that was accessed, we were able to take a look to see what was going on with all of her teeth, and we found that she had multiple teeth with really severe cavities, multiple teeth on the verge of access and infection. She needed quite a bit of dental work done, several loop canals, crowns, tooth extraction. And then aside from those urgent issues, she had a cavity on just about every other tooth in her mouth. So she was a very severe case, but because she was part of the Akamak school-based dental program, we were able to see her very regularly to get her care done. Some of her more urgent and more complex needs, we were able to get her referred internally to some of our adults to do some of the more complex care. But then the remainder of her fillings and restorative work, which was quite substantial, we were able to make it lower for the class to be able to complete her needs. It took us just about the entire academic school year from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three to complete her treatment. We were able to pull her back regularly, get all of her cavities taken care of, and we were able to provide interpretation to her and to her family to make sure that she fully understood what was going on throughout, which was wonderful. And we're pretty happy to say that she should just come back now, and she's officially cavity-free, completed all of her treatment. And now we're able to continue to see her regularly through the Akamak County School-based Dental Program for her cleanings, to provide maintenance, and to help keep her cavity-free, and to provide education around the importance of oral health and taking care of her mouth so that we can keep her this way, continue care of her in the future. So we just thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to do this for these kids because if they didn't have that, if they weren't there and able to care for them directly, sometimes they would have no other way to get to our offices, and they just have so many other barriers to care. So thank you for providing just these in access for us to be able to care for these children.
Thank you. What I get?
Once again, we could go over stories after story after story, but I came to tell us the picture of what we do in the schools. But if it wasn't for the partnership and the long term of the support, we would not be there. So thank you, and I welcome anybody at any time to call us, say wrong, we'll sit down and go over more. But it is amazing, and to see the smile on the kids when they do leave, and to help the parents who don't have to take off from work unless they would like to, I think that's a blessing. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions before we, any more in time? Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Hall's going to introduce her cabinet staff. This is an effort to be, make sure that our new board members and maybe some of our other board members are able to put a name, a face, and a responsibility, their job responsibilities. So I would like the cabinet to come up and introduce yourself and tell what your roles and responsibilities are. Please come.
Good evening, it's nice to meet you, the new board members, and welcome back to the remaining board members in the last four years. I'm Brandon Burford, I'm the Child Nutrition Supervisor. My responsibilities include oversight of all, I think, the school cafeterias, the nutrition program, ensuring USDA compliance, menu development, nutritional analysis, and the role of the lunchman, the students will help me when they see me in the school. So it's nice to meet you. Oh, and we have, I think you wanted to have, we have seventy-four employees in this food services department.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Jack Val, I'm the Coordinator of Technology. I have a staff of eleven under me, and we coordinate all the apps of computing and construction for the school.
Hello, my name is Keith Gotten, I am the District Supervisor. It's my pleasure to work for Forty-Five, the District is here, and I count, and I love working with them, they do a very good job. So my role is to make sure that the schools are maintained, maintained, especially for the school. So I think they're doing a very good job in doing that, so again, thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm the Executive Director for the Secondary Schools.
Good evening. I'm the Executive Director for the Secondary Schools. So some of my duties and responsibilities, just to highlight a few, is oversee middle and high schools. Some of the things that I do, but not limited, is instructional leadership, of course, offering guidance, representing each year, driver's education, both the classroom and behind the wheel. Our AP and dual enrollment classes, which I work very close with the community college. We have at least one, some meetings, if not more, as well as we are working on the lab grant for the state. Doing, we have the intern program for our second year now, which is going really good, so I also oversee the payroll for that. Our instructional stipend forms, I oversee those for the secondary. Another big one is our career technical education. So for any of you all that have not been out to see our trade and industry programs, please let me know. Any of them that you want to go to, I'd love to take you to see those, as well as you all have heard me say, we are doing Navy GRVDC programs next year. So that'll be another one of our programs, CTE, as well as oversee the Perkins Grant. Another program we have secondary is Gear Up, which is actually only for our graduating class of twenty twenty-seven. That was an organization that picked that cohort class. We have seen them from middle school to now their ninth grade. And that'll follow their senior year and I oversee the grant for that. Also, the Title V Grant, for those who are not familiar, that is for low and low-income school divisions. Basically, a school division that has greater than twenty percent of students ages five to seventeen that are considered poverty. So I oversee that grant. Our newest grant, which is the All Virginia Grant, which I work with Miss Ella Jordan and Katie Farrell on, and that's been a work in progress, as we keep getting updates still from the state, and which I will say, Ms. Farrell is not here tonight because she is at a literacy act conference in Richmond. So hopefully she'll be coming back with some news for that for the next board meeting. Her and I also work together on our Power of Gin Labs. We now have a lab in every one of our elementary and middle schools, so we're really excited. And we just got an email last month where they have just bought quite a bit of new equipment and supplies for us. And we were going to be doing APD with teachers on January twenty-ninth, so we're really excited they're coming here for that. Also, the Junior Achievement, we do that with our eighth graders, and that's basically our career exploration, but we're also getting ready to start the seventh grade math program. And we're invited every year to Salisbury. It was at Wycom Pacific Center, they now have their own facility for Junior Achievement, which is the old Kmart. I got to go out there to have a tour. It is amazing, the facility and what they did with Kmart to put an auditorium in there and actually be able to have real-world virtual things. And I also work collaborating with Ms. Ferguson. Her and I oversee all of our counselors for both instruction, counseling, and testing. So just a few things.
We're responsible, we're supervisor, we work out in A and O High School. We have thirteen employees, three of those are groundskeepers, ten of those are facility positions. Manage day-to-day operations, plan prioritized, the work with the staff and everything. And we do everything from electric, plumbing, heating, air, we name it, we're here for it.
Good evening. I'm Tanya Martin, the Coordinator of Health Services. My office is located at Badger South Nandua High School. My roles and responsibilities include, but are not limited to, supervise an eleven school nurses and ten health assistants in conjunction with the school principal, implementing the school health program, functioning as a school nurse in every school where school nurses are absent, serving as a member on several committees to include the School Health Advisory Board, safety, Virginia Preschool Initiative, and the new superintendent's cabinet, providing training for school staff members who are assigned to perform medical procedures or who are monitoring a student with health needs such as food, allergies, et cetera, serving as a resource for school nurses and school administrators, ensuring compliance with legal and county requirements regarding the maintenance and the functional service area, including proper supplies, restoring medications, and the appropriate documentation system. I also develop, update, and implement written policies and procedures for clinical services and programs addressing health issues. I act as a liaison and promote positive collaboration with community providers for a range of services addressing child and adolescent health. I provide assistance with managing infectious illness outbreaks within our schools and perform a critical role by addressing the major health problems experienced by children. In addition, you may see me, I sometimes work in the emergency room as well on the weekends. I hope I don't see you there. It's really rewarding navigating the challenges and collaborating with cross-functional teams to ensure the health and safety of Akimak County Public School staff and students. And I look forward to working with you all.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracey Mera and I'm the Coordinator for English Language Instruction, migrant, and gifted and talented programs. So I'm just going to give you a little snippet for each program, okay? For the EL program, which is our English Language Program, we currently have seven hundred ninety-five students who require English Language Instruction by an endorse EL teacher. And we have eighteen of those teachers. We also have two hundred sixty-seven students who are currently being monitored. Some of the things that I have to do is supervise the screening, the testing, and the placement of the EL students, maintain appropriate records by using our database, this is called Elevation, which really helps, analyze the WIDA assessment data to identify areas for improvement, establish goals, and monitor improvement. Under the, that's just a little bit. Under the migrant program, in our last performance period, which ended at the end of August, we had eighty-eight migrant students. And with that, I manage the local, state, and federal databases for accuracy of identification of migrant students. We also plan a summer migrant program for our students, which we usually hire about twenty staff members for twenty days during the summer, the summer months. I also plan to provide parent engagement activities for those families. Next, we have, also I have two federal grants that I implement and manage. I have the Title III Part A, which is for the EL students, and Title I Part C, which is for the migrant students, which under that, you know, includes writing the grant and write amendments if needed. I maintain and collect information for federal monitoring, which is scheduled every three years for Title I Part C and every five years for Title III Part A. Under the gifted program, we currently have two hundred sixty-one students enrolled in the academics part of the program, two hundred forty-nine students enrolled in the virtual arts, and we have three tag teachers. We have some process, monitor tag referrals, and schedule testing for those, for the program. Also coordinate the application process for residential summer governor's school and submit the applications to the state. We usually send it for to six students to the program. I also serve as the Director for the Summer Regional Governor's School, which includes students from Akimak, North Hampton, and Broadwater. And we have two weeks in the summer with about twenty-four, twenty-five students. And I also supervise ten interpreters for Spanish and Haitian for you. And that's all. That's just a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Yanis, Director of Special Ed. I've been in the county for twenty-six years and I supervise a staff of seventy-nine. Currently, we have over seven hundred students with disabilities. We have over two hundred students with five and four plans. I oversee all students that are on medical homebound, that are on a home-based based on an IEP team decision and then related services for students in the community that are homeschooled, if they receive a related service. I oversee the placement of all students in alternative placements, whether it's a state facility, a state hospital, a day treatment facility, or residential. Oversee the division compliance for both locality, state, and federal regulations. And we support the staff in all of those endeavors. Oversee the student support monitors for all of our students that require extra care and support. Oversee the ESBIT program, which is the Student-Based Intervention Team, that is kind of the gateway for Gen N students to get extra support, whether it's through an IEP, a five and four plan, or even just monitoring for extra support. We also have students that go through for just behavioral needs. And on average, we have about two hundred fifty students that are being progress monitored, whether it's for academics, behavior, or just data in general. We kind of see what supports we can put in place, do a title form, and things like that. We oversee all the division training for Special Ed and our staff. We have certain requirements for our support staff as well. They must be required to complete autism training, reverse thirty days of employment, and things like that, and we monitor. We oversee everything legal, from OCR complaints, due process, state complaints, mediation, et cetera. I write the annual plan every year for all of our flow-through funds for Special Ed. I complete the SISNA application and monitor that throughout the year. That pays for our two behavior specialists that we have. We have the Reverse Influsion Purement Program, so all of the purement applications come through me for approval and monitoring. We oversee the CAF Committee, which is here tonight. We have the ESY program that runs in the summer. And then also I'm a member of CPMT for the Akimak and North Hampton County. And that's the highlights. So thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I am Hello, Gordon, the Coordinator of Student Services here for Akimak County Public School. I like to think of myself as the spicy one of everybody. I have been, I've been in education since two thousand and four, and I hold two master's degrees and one education specialist degree. I am currently located at the School Board Office, and here's a few of my responsibilities and duties. I am in charge of attendance, which also includes truancy. I do discipline, I'm over the All Ed programs, the Reconnect program, Virtual Virginia. I do obedience and bullying prevention with Julie. I am over four mental health counselors, two school social workers. And I also work collaboratively with everyone on the cabinet as it pertains to students, especially the All in Virginia grant with Katie and Karen. I attend the School Safety Conference yearly, which is our year is coming up in July. And I also stay current on all trends and in education. So I read a lot at home. I'm a black reader, but I read a lot. And I stay on a lot of the TikTok challenges and things that may impact our schools. And I report those out to the administrative team as I see those things and hear of trends that impact schools. So basically, my job's never done and welcome forward to everybody. If you ever need me, I'm on your phone call away. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome, your board members. My name is Paul Bennett. I am the Facilities Director and also the Chair of the Safety Committee. I focus slightly on facilities, which is what I do most. Both of the supervisors said, we've got thirteen people in the facilities, full-time, three part-time, thirty-four full-time custodians, seven part-time, and five subs. So we've got a total of sixty-three people within the facilities department. So our day-to-day operations, from start to finish, is keeping the schools clean, keeping the schools safe, keeping the schools operational, heating, air, plumbing, the whole deal. A lot of times our days start really early. Tomorrow will be one of them. We also coordinate projects, like the Akimak Primary School. I'll be involved in that on myself. I'll speak to that more in just a little bit. We coordinate projects, we manage projects, we solicit bids for projects that we don't do in-house, and we do a number of projects in-house. It's a big job and I'm fortunate because I've got two really good supervisors and sixty-three members of a great staff. Thank you.
Paul Braden, Transportation Supervisor, Akimak County Public School. I oversee the bus shop. I have hundred fifty employees, I'm a bus driver, a aide, shopmen, shopladies, staff in our office also. We operate ninety-five regular Special Ed runs every day. We run fifty midday runs. That can be various programs, the All Ed program, the Internships, Teachers of Tomorrow, the Kenny Vento programs. We also operate roughly three hundred after-school, not after-school trips, which be athletic trips and special trips during the course of the year. Summer school is also included in our programs. We have forty-five drivers operating every day for summer school in the course of the summer. Our operations on a normal day run from five-thirty in the morning to six o'clock at night. Our longest runs are two hundred and sixty miles, going across the bay. What else we do, myself, I am responsible for compliance and certification for National Highway Safety Administration, for National Motor Car Safety Administration, entry-level driver training, VDOE certification, and DMV certification. Our drug and alcohol testing program is required for all our drivers is also under my umbrella. Last but not least, I am Advisor on Weather. So that's what our responsibilities are, the bus stop, and that's my responsibility. Welcome to everybody.
Good evening. My name is Kim Ferguson and I am the Coordinator of Assessment, Accountability, and Guidance. On January first, I celebrated my six-month anniversary in this position. When five and a half months are up, I'll come back and tell you the other parts of my job that I went and never went through. The first hat that I wear is assessment. Anything that involves testing encompasses this arena. SOLs, growth testing, WIDA, and RL students, as well as CTE certifications and VAT. So in July, I will be back with an update as to how our students did on their assessments this year. To quote Bobby Bennett, "Is there a day in January that you are not testing?" Well, January is a big testing month. Right now, we have growth testing for grades three through eight in English and Math, Science and Civics, and our eighth grade for end of course. And of course, our high school and CTE certification tests are going on. I oversee eleven school test coordinators and help make sure that all of our schools are in compliance with VDOE guidelines. I represent Akimak County Schools as the Director, Director Division of Testing for our schools at the state meetings and at region two meetings. The second role I have is accountability, also known as accreditation. I work with all of our schools to make sure that the data presented to the state is correct. Any schools who had yellow or red statuses in their accreditation report, a plan was made as to how we could target those areas. Our two main accreditation target areas this year were attendance and CCCRI. While tackling attendance concerns, I work very closely with Ms. Jordan and the schools to improve our attendance rates. We meet with students, parents, and admin to address those concerns. Our CCCRI was another area that affected our schools. So in conjunction with Karen, we work with CTE teachers, principals, and school counselors on data collection and making sure that all of our seniors have attained their college, career, and civic readiness upon graduation. Luckily, last summer, we were able to submit some data changes that allowed our schools to become greener. It is my goal this year to make sure that our data is in pristine condition on first submission. So I will be back in August to give you an accreditation report. The other part of my job is to coordinate, mentor, challenge, and support our fourteen school counselors that serve our students. I enjoy working in this role with Karen and Katie. I plan professional development, train new counselors, do evaluations, write policies, and ensure that our students have access to their school counselors. I attend state meetings to make sure that we are reading guidelines and getting all the new ideas. In addition, I work with Greta on our school-based data system known as Power School. I oversee the registration of students in Akimak County, making sure that all schools are implementing the same policies. For example, the other part of my job is going where needed. For example, today, I served as a test coordinator at one of the schools, went to another school to help that test coordinator get ready for tomorrow, and then came back and worked with Teresa on our WIDA test training with our L teachers. Many roles to fulfill, but it's definitely a job I love.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Beth Whitelock. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Staffing for the School Division. I am new to the division. I started in September two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to welcome all of you. I'm responsible for the hiring, retention, background processing, and onboarding of all staff within the School Division. I'm also responsible, teacher licensure, employee relations, employee investigations, all policies related to personnel, Freedom of Information Act officer. I'm also the Title II contact person, the federal grant that includes effective teaching, high-quality teachers. high-quality teachers, staff, and also mentoring. I am in charge of Title IX contact for staff. I do work at the school board. I have one-point-five administrative secretaries that work directly with me. I also provide oversight and as a liaison to the division mentor and the mentors that work underneath her, as well as providing support for student services, our coordinator there. I'm working on the absence management system within our new payroll, the RPA payroll HR software program that we're getting ready to launch. I'm currently the compensation liaison with our compensation study group. I also work in federal state reports that are related to staff, and I've recently been appointed by the Virginia State Superintendent to serve on the investigative panel for teacher licensure. Again, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Beth Emily. I started in Akamak County Public Schools in nineteen ninety-two as the finance director, and I believe that makes me the second-longest-standing administrator behind Dr. Hall. So I'm seeing a lot of changes throughout the years. I believe when we started, our budget, our annual budget was in the upper teens, and last year, a top seventy million dollars. And every single person that you have heard from tonight has a financial need of some sort, and I have to work with all of them. So it depends if it's their grants, if it's their budgets, if it's filing excess cost reports for special education. We, our department, works with every single one of the people that you've heard speak tonight. The requirements that have increased over the years are incredible, financial requirements as far as being audited, the new government accounting standards boards, issues bulletins, we must comply because we're a part of the county audit. Special education is a hotspot, and of course, all of these SRA, CARES funds have really taxed our department. In addition, I am the chief operating officer, which is who works with operations, and you've heard from the wonderful operational side of the house. I believe that we have the best team that we've ever had since I've been here for over thirty years. They work very well together, they communicate. So if something in buildings affects food service, there's a communication there, vice-versa transportation. So thank you very much. You see me a lot, but I'll see you later on tonight.
My name's Julie Evans, and I'm the division teacher mentor, instructional coach for Akamak County. I've been here twenty-seven years, loved everything I did. I work closely with our instructional team, our HR team, administrators, and teachers. My main role is to support our new teachers that come into our division and throughout the school year with anything that I can do to help them grow and mentor them. I also have administrators that reach out to me with concerns with teachers that have been here that might need some additional support, and our team also helps them. I'm fortunate to have two special education mentor coaches that work with me, as well as a lot of retired teachers who have been a vital part of our mentoring and coaching program. Some of the supports we do in the schools, we do not evaluate classroom visits, follow-up and discussion with teachers about the visit, planning and developing engaging lessons with the teachers, co-teaching, and providing classroom management ideas and strategies. Summer's a very busy time for me because we are busy planning our week-long new teacher academy that occurs in August. It's seven days of extensive professional development, introducing newly hired teachers to community outreach programs, and networking and team-building activities with organizations around the Eastern Shore, with colleagues and administrators and within their buildings. I also help out with recruiting. When recruiting season comes, I network with colleges, universities, and various educational platforms to introduce our school district and set up and attend recruitment fairs and follow-up with potential candidates as we interview them. I'm also a certified consultant for the OVAAS bullying prevention program, and over the past four years, our team of eight have served to train elementary and middle school staff within the division, and then those school teams have turnkey and provided training and tailored the bullying prevention program within their schools. Thank you.
Okay, last but not least. My name is Becky Haney. I'm the lead social worker for the county. My office is at Akamak Elementary School, but I work at all eleven schools. Part of my job is conducting social history assessments for children that are being tested for special education. I oversee the McKinney Bento program, which is a program for people that are in transitional housing. So I work really closely with a lot of these families, connecting them to resources like housing, food, anything that they really need. Crisis management is a part of my job, so I conduct suicide risk assessments, but I'm also called when there's high-risk cases to help with the decision-making on that for the students. I'm the foster care liaison for the county. I facilitate community outreach events such as Parent University. We have a countywide clothing closet that I manage. I'm also on the attendance team, and we attend to court for truancy cases. I'm a member of the Community Partners of the Eastern Shore, the FACT team, the rapid response team, the Eastern Shore Overdose Maternity Review Committee, OVAAS, and SHA, the shore health, school health advisory board. And then I provide trainings as needed. Thank you.
I have submitted the federal programs report. If there are any questions, this is kind of like a non-hotspot time of year for federal programs because we're still recovering after meeting the deadlines of this past fall. So that's where we stand on everything. I've updated it with the new balances of the new grants that we have received. I've also included an operating budget that Mr. Taylor asked for last time. This shows our adopted budget for the year, wherein now the expenditures that we've made to date, the encumbrances as in purchase orders, outstanding, and the remaining balance. Typically, around this time of year is when we will begin to make our projections of the remaining salaries that we have for the year, which will show as incumbent salaries, and we'll be working on that in and out of when we're in budget. So that would be the update to this, is to show how much we are on the hook for for salaries, because that's the biggest part of our budget, is eighty-five percent. So that will be in the initial column. We don't usually start to try to estimate it because they're moving people around and we're changing general ledger codes through December, so we're usually in January is when we start to make that estimate. So that will be forthcoming. Are there any questions? One other thing I'd like to talk about is a lease agreement that this board has with the North Akamak Little League. This is for the land between Shinkatik Elementary School and the community center where the ball fields are. So this lease was signed in January of two thousand and eleven, and it's for twenty-five years, so it ends December thirty-first at midnight on two thousand and thirty-five. So what they have asked is to, for the approval of the school board, to put up a section of about twenty feet of fence. This is within their rights of the lease, and this fence, the purpose of this fence would be when there are big events at the community centers such as the Blueberry Festival or other big events, people are parking on the Little League field, and this would keep the community center events from spilling over on the Little League field. So while it is within the purview of the lease, they did ask for a board approval on that.
I just have one question. Is that, is there any sort of like town ordinance that would oversee any of that?
Paul Oxum has been working with Mark Bowden and Mike Tallon.
The accomplice. So do you need a vote on that, or just?
State wanted a lot, or a ladder from the school. We don't believe that.
Okay.
So is that okay?
Yeah. Okay. Is anybody?
Ma'am, I'd like to have your fire patrol vote on this. Anybody?
Yes, are there any other questions? Anybody want to make a mention?
I'd like to make a motion to review the request for Akamak County to cooperate with baseball field basis.
Second.
All in favor? I'm happy. Thank you. We'll send a letter out.
Thank you.
Okay, so as we have, we've had a little overview of the budget, we've had an overview of the revenues, we've also approved the budget timeline at ABM. We have had Mrs. Turner and Mr. Taylor sat on our budget committee meetings, which were held, I believe, the fourth and the eleventh, the past two weeks, where we went over a general overview. They served as the school board representatives to the budget process, and we went over not only an overview of kind of the budget process and where we stand, but we also went over each individual request that was submitted by a school board department head. So this is the resulting. Our revenues are down statewide, but we should be, you know, we're down overall. If you look on page one, the expenditures that are being presented in this budget are in excess of the revenues that are available at this time by two million seventy-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. It's on the second to the bottom line on page one. We do not yet know what our local increase will be because the county will give us that. Typically, we, they give us new discretionary funds based on a funding formula in which we will receive fifty-two percent of their new discretionary funds. So as soon as we get that amount, you'll see the local amount is no change, twenty-two million twenty-six thousand dollars. That's because we have not received the notification yet of what they anticipate that number will be. So there's two million dollars down, we're hopeful we'll be getting a local increase. We are not as far down as we thought we would be in the initial discussions and even the discussions with this board, because finances have been looking a lot over the last several years and trying to calculate salary lapse. So salary lapse would be if I am a teacher who's been here thirty years, and I leave because I'm retired, and I'm replaced by somebody who has two years or four years or whatever. And it's a significant amount when you consider that we have about four hundred and thirty teachers, about eight hundred and fifteen employees. So we've looked a lot over the past two weeks on our salary lapse, and we have quite a significant amount of that. We are taking care to keep the open positions, because we have a number of open positions that I've been talking to this Whitelock about, and we're taking care to keep that in there as a placeholder, because just because we don't have them doesn't, or we can't find them, doesn't mean we're going to stop looking. So if this board approves a business teacher or something to that effect, we are continuing to look for that. So you see that, like I said, we're about two million down, and we're hoping that we will gain some of that from the county. So because there's salary lapse, it's not that I've taken advantage of. The budget also includes the second slide. A five percent salary increase. So we're looking at a five percent. We did not put a one percent bonus in there, which is what the governor put in his budget, because if that's what passes when it's all said and done with the general assembly, then we'll have the money in there to do that with a five percent, you know, we'll adjust how we do that. So we're looking at, and talking with Dr. Hall, which this is Dr. Hall's budget. We need to do something with salaries. You'll also see on our revenue on page one how the proposed, what they call the Akamak North Hampton County distribution, you see how that went from one-point-four million to six hundred and sixty-seven thousand? We don't know what they're going to do with that by the time it's over with. We've been getting this one-time distribution, this will be like the third year. So will it go in, will it go out? You know, we don't know, but we did put in this five percent because salary increase, because this board has made a promise and a dedication in the past to not take that money back from teachers. When you approved the budget that we're in right now, we were thinking we were going to get nothing, and we actually did end up getting the one-point-four million. So I know that this board intends to honor that, even if the state takes away from us, but we must still do better beyond that. We have Maryland, and I think it's two years, I'm probably, going to go to a starting salary of sixty thousand. Our current starting salary is forty-eight thousand dollars, which has just happened for the year we're in now. I believe before that it was forty-four. Very difficult to get teachers to come here when you look at the other areas across the state, especially if you look north across Maryland. So Dr. Hall, we've been talking about possibly trying to see if we can do a fifty thousand start. I mean, I know it's not sixty, but at least it's fifty. But when we were looking at the salary increase, we're going to, we are going to propose what we did last year, which is that it'll be an average increase of five percent. So somebody at the lower end might get a higher percent than somebody at the high end as in experience. But one of the things that we did several years ago is we did this longevity supplement, which is for our long-term employees. I think you qualify for that once you hit twenty years. So that does reward our long-term employees who have stayed with us. So we have a five percent salary increase in here. We have a hundred fifty thousand dollars for, to increase our employer's contribution towards health insurance. That averages three hundred dollars a person, but we don't always do it a person because our single coverage that we provide is actually affordable, but the other tiers, which are plus children, plus spouse, or family, are not that affordable, so we tend to weight it and give a larger share to that. We are also going to go out on RFP for that this spring, so we should have hopefully sharpened pencils when we present to you in July, which is typically when we get our information and present our health insurance renewal proposal to you. We will be using an outside consultant on that. I've reached out to the county to try to use their consultant, which we used their consultant the last time we did it. Math textbook adoption. In the budget committee meetings, we found out that we're basically going to be hit with math, English, and history at the same time. So our thought is to get math, and which we will purchase about a year plus from now at the end of the year, because we're going to have to fund reading as soon as July first to twenty-five packs. So we wanted to get the math, and now there, throughout the budget request, there was a common thread of principals and department heads asking for the, you know, we have now retired administrators serving as assistant principals, and they serve typically three days a week. I think they're at the elementary schools, maybe the two middle. And that has been a big concern, that they're funded by CARES money, SRA money, and we will lose that September thirty. So we did put in this budget to continue two of them, which is three days a week at Matomkin and Shinkatik Elementary. We added an early reading specialist because the state added money for an early reading specialist, and we added additional funding for the classification and compensation study. We don't know what ours will be. That's coming in April, and it's for every single employee except for a teacher, it has been considered by this company. And we're not sure what they're going to come back with. We have seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand in the current budget, of which we've spent about a hundred thousand on instructional assistance, so we still have the six hundred and seventy-nine thousand in the budget. Listening and seeing what the county did with the results of their class and college studies, they phased it now and July first. So they phased it over like a year and a third period. We don't know if we're going to be able to do that, because we don't know what it's coming in as, but I did want to increase that seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand to a million dollars to fund this. Everybody has not, except for a teacher, has received just a specific percentage raise every year. We think, we, we've heard it, we've heard nurses, we've heard instructional assistants, we've heard, you know, custodians. We have trouble employing these people. And so we're, I have, or Dr. Hall has a million dollars in this budget to fund, help fund that survey. It's no good to do a study if you don't have money. So in a nutshell, that's what's in this budget request. The process is that this is a superintendent's budget request. And if you adopt it to go to public hearing, you can add, you can subtract. Then you go to public hearing, which would be our February workshop meeting, that's on the budget timeline. The reason being that we start backwards when they have to present to the board supervisors, which is the third Wednesday in February, which means we must have approved budget by the second Tuesday in February. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Madam Chair. I'd love to hear from you, Mrs. Turner, from you and Mr. Taylor, any thoughts in terms of the process, anything that you'd like for us to know, personal experience?
Oh, we met upstairs in the conference room and many of the people who were here tonight, they all had their lists and they, everybody went through their list. And so it was very comprehensive. We got here with everybody about their, what, what their needs were and what we wanted. And so that was pretty much the entire first meeting, most of the second meeting. And then I think some, my impression was that some things were a little more, I'm not, I may be the word is important, some things were laid more heavily than others. We did not come up with this list, we did not come up with that list.
Right, because this is a superintendent's budget request, yours will be the next one. You know, there are also some things that came up that were a, a common thread. One of them being an attendance, somebody to help report attendance. Della has some plans for that with, and with her all, with her part of the all money project. So some of the things in the budget, that in the budget request, we try to also find alternate, alternate funding for. Ms. Farrell was, is still waiting for an answer back about how she can use her E I R I money, her early reading intervention money, or maybe that can relieve some of the things that we see as a legitimate request. But we're hoping to get funds from another Title IV money, I believe, was also, but, perhaps there was an alternative for another funding request. But, and, and I also want to say that if we see towards the end of the year that we have salary lapse or what we get these projected salaries in there, if we see that we think we're gonna have money at the end of the year, these requests that are submitted, is that's where that, that's the first thing that we look at for to propose to you how to spend that money. There's no such thing as a frivolous request, you know, but, but at the same time, the Dr. Hall and, and the staff feel that the, the most important thing is to try and get money into our salaries. Because if we, we don't do that, you know, we're, we're struggling, our vacancies are, are killers. And we're struggling with that. So that has been, yes, we can put everything in that has merit, but at some point, we're going to have to balance. And so we didn't put a lot in because the, the big push is, is the salary increase. And a five percent salary increase in a year, that all we're getting at this point is a one percent bonus, that's a pretty big step and that's a pretty big vote of, you know, this is what's important.
Mr. Taylor?
Yep, a big thing, I think, throughout the two weeks that we met was more teachers. I mean, it's the big, big thing, we need more, more teachers in our schools. But we're going through this budget, are we, I guess, at the next public hearing, is that when we can add, take things out and discuss, or that being the following?
So unless you go to public hearing and then you meet after that to adopt, you can only take things out, you can't add. So if you want to add, that is not like, oh, okay, you want two reading specialists and we're taking out an alternative program to fund, it's total dollar. So this total dollar we have right now, we can never add to it after public hearing. So if there's something you want to add, or you, you know, you think needs to be in there, we need to add it now because that is our threshold that we cannot go over after public hearing. You can vote down, but you can't vote up.
So if anybody on the board would like to add anything, then they need to do it to the board before public hearing?
Well, we adopt to go to public hearing. So if you want to add something, then now's the time.
Are the two athletic trainers here?
They are not.
Keep in mind we're already two million dollars.
But this is the board's opportunity, which you have to have consensus, just please don't tell me not to. Yes, consensus here, but this is the opportunity and no, they are not, that's why I tried to do that short list, so that you can see it. Should we go down, is anybody?
Is the, is the secretary of the Gaudis Council of the Comby School in there?
No, it is not, because that is one of the common threads that we've seen for attendance. And Della has some thoughts and the team has some thoughts on how to try to hire maybe two or three people with all in Virginia money that would do that for a multitude of schools, not just one. So it is not the same.
Couldn't we do both, because the all-in money will go away eventually and they still need secretary for all the programs they have?
So we have, the all-in money is three years. And it's, we're in the first year right now, so it would be two years.
Would the secretary of the Gaudis Council of the Comby School, different money, it will go away in three years and she would have the support from the secretary and possibly, you know, help a lot, that's what we, can we add that? Like the, make a motion that we add to the budget, the secretary of the Gaudis Council of the Comby?
Sir, second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
opposed? I would.
That passed.
Yes. Yeah, obviously, I believe.
Okay.
I made very clear that I'm acutely aware of our student athletes and the risk that they take on the field. I think there was a few incidents last year. And I feel very strongly that we need athletic trainers out there for the safety of our student athletes.
Madam Chair.
Excuse me. Put in my, like, my motion.
Well, my, my question was related to athletic trainers.
Okay.
I'm asking, I, I have a question, I agree. And so my question is, I, I need help recalling with regard to an athletic director. Are there only?
So the athletic directors are the people that organize the sports. But the athletic trainers, not, I may have misspoke, but the athletic trainers are the people who are on the field and tend to the children who are injured. So if they're able to assess a child who is perhaps concussed and keep them from going back into the football game and being further injured. And there, I will say there have been school boards who have been personally sued because Shaw River injured, they were sent back on the football field and then ended up in a very bad predicament, partially paralyzed. And the school board numbers were called and accounted for that. So I feel it's very important that we have at least two athletic trainers.
I have a question, how much does an athletic trainer cost?
I don't know, I mean, not, but there was, there was money in the budget, we've not tried to, we never advertised for one.
And I thought it was like up to fifty thousand?
About sixty, seventy thousand.
Sixty, seventy thousand. In my thought, question associated to, would they, how would they work all the events? Particularly football, what we're talking about, right, this, the mental problem with the concussion. And so are the E N Ts at the, do they have an ambulance that hears to the games?
They're separate, you know, so I, I.
Well, I guess it's discussing.
I believe the, the best thing would be to attempt to hire two athletic trainers. If we could recruit them, if we could not, then we could maybe look at playing big, which might involve other healthcare providers, like a PMS person. But the, the gold standard would be two athletic trainers.
I move to go ahead and add the athletic trainers to the budget, please.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think you can, I can, I can motion.
I made a move, I made the.
I don't, who's second?
I did.
That's what I'm saying, I'm having.
And make a motion, please, sorry, see the chair outside.
This, if I could just be sure, it means some people who are in favor are adding that to the budget. And four, five, opposed to the athletic trainers? I have a statement.
So if we, if we move to do this, push it forward and we see that it costs too much, we'll drop it from the budget, is that right? Or we can't have trainers from the budget? Wasn't the budget, the budget for that year?
So I think that you put an amount in the budget this term, so we would put that in there. And then if Ms. Whitelock was not able to find somebody, or we could not find somebody for that amount, then it would have to come back.
One more question, so would the trainer just be at games or are they at the school, you know, two thousand eight hours a year?
He did.
Okay. So we have our votes.
But also, if, if you put it in there, in order to get a balanced budget, it might have to come out if we don't have the money. Like I said, we're already two million dollars.
As with any other things?
Right, it might have to come out and draw the voting for some.
So we have to add it conceivably?
Yes, you do.
Well, we can remove it later on.
Oh, we.
And before we get?
Typically, we add it now and we can never take anything out until the general assembly passes a final budget. And then we come in with, we need to cut it, this is what we propose, and then there's discussion.
Exactly, but if we don't put it in there, it's not gonna be hot, so I think this is, I haven't until.
You might get lucky, you put it in there and when we go to the board supervisors, they might say, oh.
Any other questions or additions from the panel?
I, I have a question, Madam Chair. I, I misunderstand the pay raises. You say that teachers will get five percent, but not all of them will get five percent, you're gonna do an average based on their, their years of experience? How, how does that work?
So what, if, we would bring this scale to you for approval. So we don't have a scale on, you know, to propose tonight because we don't know what's gonna pass. So let's just say that we are able to keep the money in for five percent. Then we actually come to you with a pay scale that you must approve. And the way that we look at it, we take the D E A, Virginia Education Association, puts out a survey, a salary survey of everybody in Virginia. And we look at benchmarks of zero years' experience, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty. And we compare and they rank you, they don't, they give you the, what, what the county gives on all those different years and they rank you. So out of a hundred and thirty-two school divisions at zero, you might be ranked eighty-nine, but at year thirty, you might be ranked seventy. So when we did this overall scale adjustment several years ago, what we tried to do was look at those benchmarks and come up with close rankings so that we weren't ranking way better at year thirty than we were ranking at zero, at year zero.
Sure.
And we come back, okay, so then we get those rankings close and then it fills in with an Excel spreadsheet calculations.
Now, is this gonna, does this kinda compare, this will make better sense to me when I look for the federal government? We had pay grades and then we had banks, is that pretty much what you?
Yeah, we have thirty steps.
Okay.
We have thirty steps, it starts when you're brand new with zero years' experience, a step one. And I think now you have to get to thirty-four years to get to the top step because every year we didn't get raises, so there were some combinations, there were years. At one point, we had like forty steps, that's just too much to get to the top. So we tried over the years to cut them off, so we had some, some grouping of experience.
And, and we can, the county can void retire after thirty years, fifty years of aging?
A teacher can retire thirty years with a minimum age requirement for, of course, you can continue to work and enrich your retirement. And I think it's thirty years for what they consider full retirement on this teacher.
Okay, and, and I know it's not part of the budget, it can't be done today.
No, that's fine.
But just, just part of future thinking, is, is this was my old job. If, you know, the money comes available in years down the road, can we try to get the teachers at their top as thirty so they can retire at top salary?
That's what, and, and see, that was something you, once upon a time, every year if we give a, a three percent raise, the people at the top, they, they, we had thirty seven, they put a thirty-one on there and a thirty-two. And then we got to forty and, and teachers got very frustrated because they never got to the top. So that's why we are, we have attempted over the years to get it to a thirty step.
To that, what you were going on now.
Okay.
But, but even to get to that thirty step, you have to have thirty-four years. So we're getting there, but we're not quite there.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, that answered my question, thank you.
And as far as the, the insurance, where is that in the, in the budget pages or something?
The insurance is added to every salary line of who gets insurance now. So I do an analysis, I do a ratio analysis, I print out the insurance expense as to what, so it's in every, you're talking about the health insurance?
Correct.
Okay, it's in every single salary and benefit line if there's somebody in that line who gets insurance. So what, what I do is I do a, a printout and I do only the health insurance contribution and I do a weighted, weighted average. And then I split up the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that way to each particular place. So it's in that salary and benefit. It, it doesn't stick, yeah, because you see, you have to have classification, so it's, it's, it's a benefit, so it's in that line of multiple, almost every single salary and benefit. And we're hoping for good results.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir. So, could we adopt that to go to public hearing with the two changes that were passed tonight?
I make a motion that we take the budget with the two amendments or the amended items and take it to public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Very patient C I A committee.
C I A committee?
What about with the budget, was I even hearing the C I A committee?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is George. I'm the chairman for the C I A committee. Jennifer and I have been our guiding light. And we're here today to speak for the children that don't have a voice, that can't speak up for themselves or maybe don't know that they need to speak up for themselves. Uh, we're here to speak for the parents that maybe don't know that they need to speak up for their children. And we're here to speak for the teachers that are in the classroom that are speaking up for the kids because they know the needs that they have in the room. All right, so as of December first of last year, there were seven hundred and eleven students with special needs in Akamak County. General education students, inclusion, six oh nine, self-contained elementary students, sixty-five, self-contained secondary students, thirty-seven. And this is just to give everybody an idea of how many kids we have with special needs in our county. Developmental delay, I got my boy in the back. Autism, that's my boy in the back. Intellectual disabilities, multiple disabilities, other health impairments, speech, language, specific learning disabilities, emotional disturbance, vision or hearing impairment. We have a huge need. Increasing pay, I know it's been a hot topic today. We all know, everybody's asking for money for, to get our teachers paid correctly. We all know, everybody's asking for money for, to get our teachers paid correctly, to get the, the aides that work in the classroom with the kids paid correctly, uh, to get the money that the teachers need in the classroom. The, creating the new IEP support positions. Jennifer, correctly, if I'm right, this is the person that would help write the IEPs for the teachers?
This is the pay for the one-on-ones for students that require extra support.
Alright, so that's the person that would work with my son one-on-one. The one that makes twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Correct.
I know. Uh, increasing the pay for, rate for student mo, support monitors. Currently, they make twelve dollars and fifty cents, not a livable wage. I'm going to explain to you what the person that works with my son does, because I know this person, you know, the whole time he's spending in class. My son does not speak, he's seven years old, he wears a diaper. Uh, he had a feeding tube at one point, a GJ tube. You know, he's got speech, he doesn't speak. So it takes somebody very special to work with the kids. This is just my son, I've seen other kids in the classroom that, you know, I'm, we're blessed that he's not in any other condition that other kids have been in, or are in. We're blessed that when he did have the GJ tube in him, he had somebody that was trained on how to work on his GJ tube. Mind you, for those of you that don't know, the GJ tube is how we feed him, when he can eat by mouth. Okay? We're asking the people that work with him to have these qualifications. We can all go work at Dunkin' Donuts, Walmart, Riverside, Purdue. I work at a chicken factory, I'm proud. They all make more than the people that take care of my kid. They all make more than the people that take care of our children that are disabled, that don't know any better. We are currently attempting to build possessions for support staff, and we want to be dependable. And I say dependable with an emphasis, because plenty of times, my child's in the class with nobody to take care of him. The teacher is overwhelmed. The assistant teacher is overwhelmed. And there are other children in there with more needs. And if we have to pick and choose which one you're going to have taking care of today, we should be ashamed of ourselves. Care for support and build a positive rapport with our most medically fragile and highest level of need students, yet we want them to do all these things earning less money than they would be greeting at Walmart, or serving fast food at McDonald's, or Dunkin' Donuts. There's no comparison in the importance of the work our support staff do for our students. And I'm going to tell you what, because I'm sure parents out here realize it, my son deserves it. All of our children in Acuña County deserve better than twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour. How can we improve? We all want to make more money. The only way we know that we're going to get a better pool of people to help our children is by increasing our pay.
Amen.
We all know that. Twelve fifty an hour, nobody would be in here for twelve fifty an hour. Purdue will pay you twenty dollars an hour to go work on the line. You don't need experience, you don't need to speak English, you have no knowledge of poultry. Get on the line, we'll train you, and we'll make you earn twenty dollars an hour. We're going to give you healthcare, we're going to give you vacation, and we're going to treat you right. McDonald's will do the same thing. Is Acuña County worse than our people working around us? Are we worse than Purdue? Is that what we're saying? Twelve fifty an hour, twelve fifty an hour? That's terrible. Increasing life skills budget for secondary regional programs. Regional programs.
Jennifer, what am I missing?
That's the, um, and she's, uh, like... This is what they're doing in the classroom. This is what the teachers are helping kids do in the classroom.
And my son has Down syndrome, and he's autistic severely. I know when he grows up and he graduates high school, he will not be independent. For me, when I see his teacher, and I, his, his aide work with him, I'm proud of him. I'm proud of him. He just learned how to use his cup, to drink out of a cup. He's seven years old. At six, he learned how to use a spoon to feed himself. I'm proud of my boy. But he would not have done any of that if it hadn't been for his teacher and his aide. These kids, kids learning the, how to do laundry, how to do a job where, you know, they'll be maybe working in a school, or working at a gym, greeting people, that it means a lot to them. It means a lot to, a lot to us as a community. Imagine what our students would be capable of if we provided the teachers with the support needed to complete the activities that the curriculum recommends. That young boy requires a one-on-one full-time. But, guys, I repeat myself, we are lucky as parents. I see other kids in our school system that are worse off. So he deserves better, and the other kids deserve better. How can we help him? Twelve fifty an hour is not a, not a livable wage. We need to be able to spend the money to get the right people into our classroom. From the teachers, to the aides, to the items that they need in the school, in the classroom. Increase the monthly teacher budget. From, at Nan Dua High School, from one fifty to two fifty, we're asking for a hundred dollars. Create a monthly teacher bu, budget at Nan Dua Middle School. We don't have one at Nan Dua Middle School. They're asking for a hundred and fifty dollars. Creating IEP, Sped Support Teacher Possessions. We currently have forty-nine of our special education teachers with Acuña County Public Schools that are provisionally licensed, career switchers, and/or do not have a background in special education, but are cons, considered special education teachers. The licensed Sped teachers are required to mentor, train, write, additional IEPs, amendments, ROEs, progress reports, run all their meetings, and double in the workload to help these teachers. My son's teacher is Mrs. Rogers at Acuña Elementary School. My wife and I have been there many, many times. She works her tail off, taking care of my son, the other students, staff shortages, kids are sick. She works her tail off, and she still takes the time to email us, to do his IEP, to check in on him when he's sick. IEP writing, the average special education teacher spends about two to three hours writing an IEP for a student with special needs. This includes analyzing data, collecting input from teachers, reading reports, and scheduling meetings. This does not include progress reports, amendments, or training. My son was evaluated at THKD. Mrs. Rogers did his evaluation twice. It was multiple pages, I think it was like twenty pages. And she did it twice, because they didn't get it the first time, so she had to resubmit it. She took the time twice to do it for him. Paperwork, in general, a special education teacher pro, processes more paperwork than any other teacher. A person to schedule meetings, complete meeting notices, determine an instructional plan, obtain signatures, upload and scan paperwork to all the proper places, et cetera, is a cumbersome task. Some unlicensed staff struggle to teach on a daily basis, let alone learn all these le, legal tasks. I do not know all the acronyms, there's a lot. But I know that the people behind me care. Mrs. Rogers loves her kids, and I'm glad my son is with her. Stipends, currently Acuña County Public School is paying stipends to licensed teachers to complete the paperwork of unlicensed staff in addition to their own. However, this work has to be done after hours on school property, and adds a burden to the teacher's mental health. Some feel it is a punishment, because they are fully licensed. I know that when we go pick up my son at three o'clock in the afternoon, I can look at the people that are in the classroom, and I know they've had a long day. They don't have to say a word to me. At the end of the day, thank you very much, Mrs. Rogers, and I thank all of the aides in there, because they've done above and beyond to take care of the kids that are in that classroom. IEP Sped Support Teacher. Five total possessions, each teacher would be responsible for two schools. Scheduling and running meetings, collecting input for the IEP, keeping IEPs compliant, activate workload from Sped classroom teachers, so that they have time to create engaging activities and lessons for their students. Current money being used as stipend, pay would go toward paying these salaries. Build mentors, can help, building mentors can help teachers in the classroom more with everyday tasks, instead of being bombarded with the paperwork and meetings. These three changes will help our special education department enter an era where we can truly put the student first. Increasing the pay to a livable wage. Increasing life skills budget for secondary regional programs. They're only asking for a hundred dollars for the high school, and a hundred and fifty dollars for the middle school. Creating new IEP Sped Support Possessions.
Do you all want to say something?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Ann, this, what's a triennial?
It is, every three years, a child with a disability has to be evaluated to determine if they still qualify.
There's a list of things that we can consider for, to change the week. I would like everyone to look at this list, and we will vote on that the next meeting.
Madam Chair, we look for a call?
Yes, yes. And some we may adopt, and some we may not. Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Among the fourteen, um, where we have comrades, should they go to the entire board, or hold them? Which are the questions? Will we wait for them back?
Does the board have a preference? I would say, we can, you know, if there's a specific question, you might have, some of these are, um, you know, you might want to read up on yourself, like, um, like the idea of having a student representative on the board. There's a lot online about that program. Um, the VSPA sort of falls with that. So read up on that, if you have questions. I mean, you're going to find a lot more information online than you're going to have known about that program. And then, I would say, email us, and we'll, and then we can discuss.
More questions, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, if, if, if the board members submit it, and it's not on the list, what does the effect? How do we know why something isn't submitted?
I think, um, I, I believe I, I would say, send it to me again, because I'm the one that can huddle that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So these fourteen that were shown up here, um, they're questions that you can ask, but I guess that the next meeting we'll be discussing?
Yes.
I think that we're discussing this in open form or closed form?
I don't think that they're closed form material.
So, so if we don't agree with something, is that okay?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. I enjoy conversation, and I enjoy debate. That means that you care. We all just sat here and nodded, nobody really cares.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright. Do we have, do we have still another comments?
I have, I have.
I, I have some.
Just a more number of comments, it's not only a chair.
I, I do have some. May I speak?
Sure.
Um, just a few topics. First, I'd like to offer that for the presentations, of the various principles or APs, whatever's referenced, when they come to the data, or to the, to the board, I want to offer that data presentations are the, I think that we also, going forward, and do well, to break that data down by population, for example, by gender, by race. I think pretty much every school presentation that I've seen has broken the data down by students with a disability. I appreciate that. Data tells a story, and if we're painting with a broad brush, we're going to get one view. I would like to see future presentations in data by various populations. Second thing of three, bullying, I have some thoughts around bullying. I hope that all in our system, from administration, staff, students, teachers, everybody understands that bullying is not appropriate. I would use myself as an example. I would discourage anyone from attempting to bully me or intimidate me. It will be tolerated. Finally, um, my thoughts are around expectations that our public has, and specifically there with regard to when a member of our public sends an email to the entire board. I'm subject to correction, but for the four years I have served, our protocol is that you will not get a response from all the non. That is not a reasonable expectation. The chair speaks for the board, and our practice has been that you will get one response when you email the entire board. I do have other topics that I look forward to speaking on in the future, those are the three that I wanted to speak on tonight.
I enjoyed meeting all the department chairs, there was a lot of them, and they do a lot of things, but it's nice to see them.
I enjoyed the budget amendments, a lot to take in, and, but I enjoyed being part of that. I'd like to try to put some discussion to actually, to what Dr. Johnson was saying about applying to emails, but we can discuss that at the end of the time, but I'm looking forward to serving this board for the last four and a half years, and I'm looking forward to the next, these coming four years.
I, I would just like to thank everybody for coming out, putting a name to a face. Now the only thing I need to learn next is all the acronyms you guys all throw out. Yeah, the presentations are very yours, it's a very powerful presentation, thank you so much. And I just want to thank everybody for being here tonight.
I'd like to say, definitely an awesome presentation by George with the special education thing, and, um, you're one now. And, um, you're one thousand percent right. Twelve fifty is a joke. One hundred percent joke. And I'm doing everything in my power while I'm on this board. That's why I'm here, to make that go up. Because twelve fifty, you can, you know, shovel trash all day. Make way, way more than that. You know, and like I said, everybody's children is definitely the number one priority at Akimak Schools and should be. Not calling it off on somebody else. Like I said, you can go anywhere and make twelve fifty an hour. My, my daughter graduated last year. She makes sixteen dollars an hour and she's a cashier. She ain't got no experience or nothing and you got people working with your, your son. You know, you can make a twelve fifty an hour. It, it definitely doesn't make you really care a lot about your job if you can't even make enough money to pay your bills. So that's my feel on that.
Thank you.
You're right.
I'd like to thank all that spoke today. Also, I just, I just think that there is a lot of dissension among this board. It's going to be hard to make any decision because there's a lot of dissension. And I'm speaking out right. Until only the board make decisions, it's always going to be decision on this board. We are not taking as one. We got nine members here. We got, we supposed to come together and make one decision. When one or two people make decision, that is not considered a board. That is considered their decision and they are not putting other people as considered. My biggest thing is if this board is meeting outside of this board, when we have meetings, it is illegal. And I'm letting you know now, if you get caught, you will be reported and I'm not putting up with it. Thank you.
Yes.
Just wanted to do what Mr. Wicker said.
No, we did not respond to my request. You spoke. We did not say.
You're out of order.
I am not.
You are out of order.
That is not correct way to say it.
I'm just saying that I applaud Mr. Wicker dissent and did it all that. So thank you guys for coming out and speaking.
Thank you.
Apologies. Any issue there, Mr.?
I just have a couple things. One is that this is the James School Principals Month, so if you have an opportunity to contact the principals and buildings, uh, email our line, just tell them how much you appreciate it. Um, I have Bobby here tonight and Bobby is going to talk about Akimak Primary and where we are with elementary.
We need to begin. Uh, I'll try to keep this pretty brief, but I know that it's of importance to a lot of people. We will be working with Dills Architects on the Akimak Primary Building. They have a rich history in K through twelve and school construction buildings and a strong, very strong look at historical preservation abilities, things like that. Just to kind of let some people rest at ease. There's no plan anywhere to put parking in front of this building out of nothing. I, I've got a comment from the architect that they don't even think about even doing anything with the sycamore trees that are in front. They plan to leave the front of the building as it is. They want, they want to preserve the character of the existing building. I've looked at some of the projects. So I mean, I think that we picked the right company, right firm to do this. Uh, they've already, they're not under contract yet, but hopefully by the end of this week they will be. Uh, but they've already made two site visits to look at the building, to check, you know, to look at the historical part of the building, how it kind of meshes with the community, and they want to keep all that in place. They want to transform the interior of the building and have it, you know, a functioning, efficient school board office, but also they're thinking about using the auditorium for board supervisors meetings, things like that. So we'll be talking with them a whole lot. Their plan right now moving forward, it's February. They want to spend the entire month of February meeting with administrators and department heads to kind of get into programming the building, what it needs to look like, whose offices need to be where and things like that and so to make it an efficient building. So they'll spend most of the month doing that. Um, they'll come back at the end of February and probably meet with Dr. Hall and others to go over what they've come up with. And then March, they plan to start doing space programming and develop floor plans. By the end of March, they plan to have floor plans completed and then go into what they're going to work on for big documents, instructions, construction documents, things like that. And I'm not going to put anything out there on expectations on when they'll have that, but I mean, we will have those documents late this year, late fall probably. I'm trying to push the timeframe up, um, but they're going to have quite a bit of work to do on the interior of this building to work in what we need to do as far as the class, the classrooms there now, how they can be divided, what walls can come out, what new walls can go in. So I mean, they're going to have a lot of work, but I'm hoping that last week they kind of move their timeframe up some because I mean, uh, heard Mr. Heinz already talked about this. You know, this has gone on for a long time, from what I understand, like twenty plus years. So we want to show action, show that we're moving forward, show the community we're moving forward. But right now it's in the abandoned building. It doesn't look that great, but it is. So that's kind of a update in a nutshell. Hope there are no questions.
Madam President, I would like to merkly a little update on this since this is a major topic. Stay on topic.
Thank you.
Dr. Hall, um, I know we have a, I guess, committee for the Akimak Primary. I'm making sure the board comes wrong, no more wrong. I would like to volunteer to be on that.
Do we have a list of committees?
I have one. Hey, sir.
Okay.
There are some other committees there. We've got volunteers and, um, there's a list somewhere. We have. So there's a couple of openings that we thought we could pass the list around. Employ the volunteer for any other openings.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Regarding committees, I submitted the email questions. Would you like to answer? I, I.
I'll try. So there, um, if anybody else is interested in the safety committee, there's an opening there. There's an interest, there's an opening, um, on the CIAT committee and the talent committee. That's our place.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, um, you want the list back or are you going to speak now?
Sure.
Um, I want you to be the second member on the safety advisor committee.
Thank you. Tagging once, tagging once. I'll be tagging.
Volunteer for the board supervisors like to volunteer for that. The board supervisors quarterly meeting, volunteer for that. Oh, I just want to.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, we all did a choice in that. We got signed to that. Anybody else? I'll be right back. Is it permanent?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Just one for this. Make sure we got, there'll be an agreement on it. So, um, the top one was the budget committee, which is already over with. That was Ed and I. Um, there's going to be Akimak Primary slash Buildings Committee and Jason have volunteered to be part of that. The board of supervisors quarterly meeting is Ed and I. The Division Audit Committee, um, is Dr. Johnson. The Eastern Shore Community College is Stephanie Jackson. The School Safety Audit Committee is Dr. Johnson. Glenn Neal, the Special Ed Advisory Committee is Stefan. And Michelle, School Health Advisory Board is Malcolm and Jesse. And I will be tagged.
How about you?
Somebody else.
How about you for special?
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Um, yes, yes.
Can we have two of you from Shore Community College or is that just one? I don't know if you know what I have been sort of, especially planning to.
I know and you've done a fine job, Dr. Johnson. What my, my, I thought, this is the will of the board, but I thought it might be nice if we rotated these around and also hope that from time to time, people will come back from their committees and sort of let the board know what's happening on their committee so that we're better informed.
So my question remains, Madam Chair, my question was can we have two of the last?
I don't know.
I make the motion to approve the amended committee list.
Sorry. I do have something else. I'm sorry. I didn't have it written down. Um, I do have, I asked the National Board Certified Teachers, would they come tonight? And they are here. Um, I know I saw Michelle sitting there on like. Yes, ma'am. Can we finish? Yes, okay. All in favor of this committee left? All in. Opposed? Thank you. And, um, we have three very special guests here tonight. Julie Harrower, Michelle Hatcher, Allison Tyler, would you like to come up? Are you recognized? Louise Lake.
Well, um, Beth, would you like to talk about the National Board Certification and how you become a National Board Certified, a National Board Certified teacher? It is a very difficult, a wonderful honor, lots of work, and we're really proud of these teachers.
So yes, to become a National Board teacher, you are among the best of the best. And, um, I come from a, just to share, I come from a school district that's just a little bit smaller than this one before I came here and we had none. Um, some of the reasons why we had none is because the teacher says it is so rigorous, the amount of work that has to be done along with their daily jobs and family life that, um, some of our highest teachers from where I used to be employed, so they just couldn't do it. And when I came here and found out that you had three, this is amazing. These are truly the best of the best. They have to go through a National Board rigorous program that are different modules that they have to complete. They, once they obtain their National Boards after testing assessments, then they have to maintain and continually renew the professional development credits and then almost go through the whole process again. So the fact that you have these three, um, it sends a message that they know their craft very well and our students are in good hands. And I, again, I'd like to recognize Julie Harrower. Allison Tyler. Michelle Hatcher. And they are listed among all of the National Board credentials that these three individuals, the same individuals are included by Akimak County Public Schools and you should be very proud of them.
Thanks so much.
The board will adjourn to closed meetings as allowed by section two point two dash three seven eleven, code Virginia subsection A one, personnel subsection A two, student matters subsection A seven legal. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, sir.